Commission concerns, we could try to address them between now and when it -- when it final action was taken.
Okay.
But the item is not up for final action tonight since staff was not able to finish their recommendations about it.
Okay, do you have a mini-staff report?
Yes. Commissioners and members of the public, this is a conditional use permit and design review application in order to convert the existing Union 76 station at 1400 Powell Street into a Chevron station by remodeling and doing exterior modifications and then converting the existing garage structure to a snack shop addition. It would be a mini-Mart or snack shop. Plans call for a remodeling of this building to stucco and glass with a -- in a white color with a colored roof element and a change in the canopy, a refacing of the canopy and a general cleanup of the site. Plans also call for remodeling the four islands in the center of the site to where you get gasoline and to revise the parking layout slightly in order to provide for new air and water dispensers here and a parking lot or parking area for the mini-mart here. In addition to that, in conjunction with staff's recommendations and desires, the applicant has been willing to move the frontage improvements along Hollis and Powell, 12 feet, to the west in order for us to be able to purchase, the city to be able to purchase that strip of property for the Hollis and Powell Street traffic improvements which are required by the traffic, our traffic, our citywide traffic improvements. The applicant has been willing to show this on the site plan and show it's still working. So with that, I would be glad to open a public hearing to address any questions the commission has.
Okay.
The applicant is also here.
Okay, great. Before we open it up, are there any commissioner questions of staff?
I have one. Since we had revisited this once before, what is the ingress and egress going to be into and out of this project on Powell?
Sure. The plans now show that the existing driveway on Hollis will be retained, that there'll be a driveway moved over on Powell, the east driveway. There'll also be a west driveway on Powell. And there are two existing driveways on Pellidoo. One will be closed and the other one will remain open. So the -- this is designed to basically give you maximum access to the pumping islands in a manner that you could come in on Pellidoo, come in on Hollis, or come in on Powell. So one driver will be eliminated from what exists now, and that's that second driveway on Pellidoo.
But that's really not my concern. My concern are the driveways on Powell because that's the main street with all the traffic, you know, and people come around.
There's an island on Powell now that basically prevents you--
I know, but I'm talking about the traffic that's going from east to west. It comes on Hollis, goes around the corner, and then pulls in there and stacks the traffic. Yeah, I'm talking about that one now. Is that ingress and egress, or is that ingress only? And the other one is--
At this point, all the driveways are shown to be two-way. And the traffic report that was done the last time we visited this basically said that you could look at closing this driveway, but it really didn't matter. And the traffic engineer's recommendations were that this driveway be retained because the more choices you give people, the greater, or the less chance there are of a backup or traffic conflict.
Okay.
So that's what's proposed now.
I have a question. Has applicant been informed of the Sushi Village parking thing?
There's no longer any parking for Sushi Village at this place. You can confirm that with the applicant.
Okay.
The Sushi Village has been able to secure parking behind them for--
Okay, any other questions, staff?
Well, I guess the driveway question. The one that makes me the most uptight is the one on Hollis Street because I have many times seen left turners create near serious accidents there.
So that would be a person who wants to get gas realizes that they can't turn here, turns left, and then turns left again.
Or northbound Hollis and didn't make the left turn onto Powell and decides to make it into the gas station from there.
But what about someone who's exiting and wants to go northbound on Hollis?
Well, the ones who are exiting and want to go northbound on Hollis are truly horrible. If that driveway remains, I would ask the Public Works Director to look into a median strip, median barricade down the middle of Hollis because the right turn in and the right turn out is not a problem, it's the left turn.
Because they are doing it at the BP station on Christie, you know, there's a red line--
Oh, it's just as bad there. We'll get to that next time around. I mean, in both cases, this is the free right turn stacking that is the mitigation of a dozen projects, and the stacking is killed by the cars trying to cut across both directions. If we're not going to allow left turns out or in and are going to seriously consider some kind of barricade to stop that from happening, then what's the difference between that and closing a driveway? Southbound traffic can make the loop and get in on Powell anyway. The only traffic which couldn't make it into the gas station easily would be eastbound Powell Street traffic. You'd have, you'd make them loop around the block at 59th Street.
Right, and then come down Pellidoo.
That's not great. Well, I don't want to kill the gas station, but I sure hate what that one driveway does.
And that's basically the interference with stacking, with stacking that's required in order to make that free right turn? Okay.
And which goes to a lot of the issues we had in the mitigation measures, as Andy said, from a lot of the other projects we have. So, any other comments before we open it up? Okay, public hearing is open. Anyone want to speak on this mess, this--
You didn't.
This item? No, I didn't. This item, please come forward. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Randall Moore. I'm the architect on the project with Sutton and Associates Incorporated, 4111 82nd Street in Sacramento, California. Just, I think the project speaks for itself in terms of the lengths we've gone to to meet the requirements, so we've had extensive discussions with planning staff, and they've been very cooperative and helpful with us. And I think, were you to, you've probably all seen the project, there's next to no landscaping right now. We've increased the landscaping all the way around the project to a great degree. We're really going to dress up the building when Chevron takes it over. They require, of course, a Chevron corporate image, and we're bringing the building up to fit that image in all cases with materials, including improving the canopy to meet the standards that you see in these color photographs. Now, these particular color renderings are not of the specific building, but the color palette that you see there is exactly what we're going to be using, okay, including the graphic standards that you see. Now, in addressing the issues of concern that I'm hearing tonight, I guess it would be appropriate to find out, okay, if we have accidents there at the entrance on Hollis, how many? How many have we had? How many have we had in five years? How many have we had in the last year? Have they been serious? Have they been just fender benders? What's the situation? And I think that's very appropriate to this question. Secondly, another thing to consider, I know medians are quite popular in terms of traffic control, but extending a median down Hollis past the entrance does, to me, invite another traffic hazard, and that is, at the end of the median, if the people that are really in a hurry and want to get gas there go to the end of the median, hang a U-turn, and go right, causing further traffic difficulties at the end of the median. So what do you do? Put a median down this entire center line of Hollis? No, that doesn't work. And I think any traffic engineer will agree. I've, where I've seen short medians like this in many, many gas stations, because I've designed, been doing gas stations since 1983, usually you find is the U-turn causing more of a problem than the median corrected. Because if traffic is allowed to be controlled in and out of the station freely and easily, the occasional fender, yeah, the fender bender's going to happen at any one of those entrances. There's always going to be somebody careless, there's always going to be taking their half out of the middle. Yes, we all know it. Okay? And I understand your concern, but I think, looking at how the median is designed, if you're going to put one in there, is an important issue. The medians that do work for those turns are medians that have a controlled entrance into the entrance, but I don't think there's enough distance on Hollis to create that. So I just wanted to bring up that point for consideration because I think it does have a great effect on how traffic will overall flow around the site. And other than that, I'm open for any questions you may have, and like I say, we've, I think we've satisfied as many of the planning concerns we have, including the closure of that other entrance on the opposite street, so.
Any other questions of the applicant?
I guess so. I mean, I agree, this is a fabulous improvement of what's there.
Thank you.
It's going to be a tremendous, tremendous improvement, both visually and in terms of its internal workings, it's a lot better. And I think you're probably right, a median is, median barricade is a stupid idea. It doesn't solve one of, it doesn't solve another of the major problems that I've seen. It's not fender benders that I've seen, it's prolonged congestion resulting from--
People getting halfway across and stopping because somebody else is coming through.
Exactly so. And losing one or two whole signal cycles.
Absolutely.
And the turkeys who stick their noses out of that driveway and block the free right turn because they're trying to get into a left turn lane. That, I see that once a week.
Right.
And it just drives me bananas. And what it makes me think is that the solution is to lose the driveway. And I don't know how serious that is to the business opportunities for the station because I don't want to kill the station, but I just hate that driveway.
And I think it's very important for them to keep the driveway there. If you, if you close the driveway, you're going to increase stacking out on Powell from the first drive coming in there because people aren't going to be able, imagine it's 4:30 or it's just after 5:00 and everybody's getting off work and they're all trying, there's a bunch of people getting in gas, and if there's even, if there's any stacking at the pumps at all waiting, which can happen, if there's no places for cars to stack behind, what's going to happen is they're going to come in off of Powell and they're going to find a stack of cars and they're going to have a problem there. That entrance there on Hollis is going to create relief for cars that either have to try and get out and get onto Hollis and then make the right turn onto Powell, or, you know, there's, I can see all kinds of additional, frankly, more frightening traffic tie-ups were the entrance on Hollis eliminated than if we kept it where it is and maybe tried to control traffic a little better. I don't know. I have, I have done enough of these, especially, I mean, I've even seen sites twice the size of this with plenty of maneuvering room that when they don't have enough entrances around the site, we get traffic problems because it all, it all happens at those entrances, especially when there's a peak flow of automobiles on and off the site. So, I don't, I can only speak from experience, I think, too, we've all had enough experience going in and out of gas stations to know the problems.
With your expertise, usually when a gas station goes from gas only or gas and mechanical service to a mini-mart type gas station, how much more traffic?
You know, there's not a lot of extra traffic. We've even had experience here recently, you know, this new wave in mini-marts is not to have just a mini-mart, but to have the mini-mart with what we call QSR, quick serve restaurants inside. We have one on a smaller site in Fairfield that we're designing right now that has a little mini-mart inside. They have actually more pumps. They have a sub-shop on the inside and a TCBY yogurt. And they even have a little drive-through around the back. What we found at all of these, just sitting there watching, is yes, you will get the occasional person who comes there because he's on his lunch break and he wants to get that sub and have an ice cream pass through the window and then drive off. But a majority, and I would say, when I say a majority, it's like 75 to 80 percent of the traffic on that site is there and they get gas and then they use the mini-mart. It's really quite an interesting phenomenon, but yeah, there will be, I will say there will be an increase in traffic because there's just more convenient stuff there that people will want to have, okay? They're not only there to get gas, but they're going to pick up that six-pack of Pepsis for the weekend or whatever. And I think that, anytime there is that kind of dual use, yeah, there will be a slight increase in traffic, but I would say that most of the people going in there are gas purchasers and then there's impulse purchases beyond that. Now, were this more of a destination thing, I've seen these large truck stops where the gas is secondary and the other services are primary. Yeah, that's a little different situation, but I don't ever consider a mini-market to be a destination site. You're not going to go to a mini-market and get two bags with the groceries. It just doesn't happen.
I would still like to revisit Andy's idea about this, no ingress and egress at all on Hollis.
Let's finish the public hearing before we go into that. If there being no one else, or no other questions of the applicant, let's see if there's anybody else who wants to speak in the audience. Anybody else want to speak? Please come forward. State your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Russell Gates, and I was here on another issue and am interested in this. You were looking for accident victims. I was two years ago on my bicycle, and I was hit by someone pulling out of the gas station to turn left on Hollis. And as a daily user of that intersection, I think that what goes on there is outrageous. There's, I've never seen an officer give anyone a ticket. People don't use the stops time when they're making right-hand turns. And I would like to support Mr. Gates on what he says with the median and also add something that where you leave that gas station, you can only turn right onto Hollis. So, and it's a, just as a daily user, like, I would say that's one of the worst intersections in this community. And people are so stressed that getting in and out of this community, and it really reflects right there at that intersection. And with what's proposed and adding another additional lane at that point, I think it's only going to enhance tempers with people trying to get in and out of the gas station at that point.
So is your, during your observations, is the biggest issue that entrance on Hollis that we're talking about?
Yes, it is, and it's leaving the gas station and turning left to--
Going north?
Right.
Yeah, that's--
And those people are so aggressive, it's just unbelievable. You know, and so I don't ride my bike down there anymore, and then I'm a daily vehicle user down there now, and it's like you're intimidated by these people. You know, they're the bullies. And it's very dangerous. And it's just a big accident waiting to happen, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. There's, Hank, do you want to come on?
We had a similar problem at Powell and Frontage Road. And as far as I know, and it maybe hasn't been enough time, but there, I believe the right turn only signs at the exit onto Frontage Road have helped a lot to deal with that problem because we were having people coming out of there and turning left, and as far as I know, that's been dramatically reduced, maybe not eliminated, but I think that's a comparable situation.
Yeah, well, if I can answer that, it's comparable only aspect in one way, but the other way is the fact that you have a very busy set of lanes on the other side, which intimidates a lot of those people from trying to get over there. You know what I mean?
Well, you, it gets pretty busy there on the Frontage Road, and we, you do see all kinds of things where you will see traffic on Powell make the U-turn into the gas station when they're given the chance, so that will happen. But it's, it's really a judgmental thing for people who are, you know, make their decisions according to what time of day and the traffic is like.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask Hank a question?
Sure.
Do you think Powell Street is so narrow that it doesn't make sense to allow a U-turn during the left turn, during the protected left turn motion for our eastbound Powell drivers? Do you think that's, it's too narrow?
No, no, I don't.
Because if we allowed, if we allowed U as well as left during the protected left turn motion for eastbound Powell drivers, then what we've given the gas station is the right to pick up that eastbound Powell traffic, and we don't have to have the Hollis Street driveway as badly for them.
I don't think you're going to see that movement very much because what happens is when you're trying to exit, you've got to go back from where you were coming and make a U-turn down by the, in the Powell Street thing, you've got to make a U-turn down by the entrance to City Hall. If you're going, if you're, if you really want to go--
Oh, you're talking about the station over here, the Frontage Road station?
Right, and the same thing would be true of Hollis. If you, if you're coming west, if you're coming eastbound on Powell, I think you'll look for another gas station unless you're completely out of gas because when you get out, when you're finished getting gas, you can't easily get back in going into the direction that you want, other than you could go out of Hollis on the Hollis exit.
No, I'm talking about getting into that gas station. There's not another gas station till Telegraph. So, anybody who knows his way around here and is low on gas is going to try and get into that station.
Yeah, people will do that. I'm just saying, I don't think that's going to be happening very often because it's under those situations. And it's, it's when, when somebody has, they're getting low on gas, I think they will go to the next easily available gas station rather than go through the rigmarole getting into that particular one.
Well, it seems to me that the left turn onto northbound Hollis and then the left turn across the blocked traffic that's always sitting there is not an easy movement either.
Yeah.
And if the, if the, if the sign at the left turn arrow had the pictogram of the left and the U as well and invited you to make that turn, it seems to me that's an invitation into the gas station that's an easier movement than trying to make a left and then a left into the Hollis Street driveway because there is always traffic backed up and waiting at southbound Hollis approaching that intersection.
Well, you, if you're trying to eliminate the left turn into the gas station--
That's it.
--at Hollis, then, then there should be the discussion of the, making it just an exit only. As I recall, the react, the, the negative side of that was that they depended on some of their gas delivery trucks coming in off of Hollis, I guess going around the block or something, but there were some problems in coming off of Powell in there.
Well, I don't care about gas delivery trucks. They'll go around the block because they're paid to do it. What I care about is business for the station.
Yeah.
Because you're revisiting the same situation at the BP station on Christie and Powell, where it clearly says you cannot make a U-turn, okay, but they will make a U-turn into the service station. That bothers me less than those that turn around on Christie and then try to turn left. You know, because they can't make the U-turn. Because the same situation is here. It's identical. So the U-turn is really less cumbersome, allowing them that U-turn than allowing them to turn left on Hollis and then turn left into the station.
But Powell is wider at Christie than it is at Hollis, and the U-turn is easier at Christie because of that. It's three, four lanes. It's four lanes there.
Yeah, I think the other problem that you have is what we're, what we're widening for on Hollis is for the free right turn. So to the extent that that's heavily used, that's in conflict with the, with the U-turn for, for eastbound Powell. And, and you can work that, I mean, but, I mean, you, people have got to pay attention to what they're doing, both in making the free right turn and making a U-turn if they are.
I have a question, Hank. The median that Chairman, Commissioner Gates suggested, what's your thoughts on that?
I think it's, I think it has some problems associated with it.
Can you put flowers in it?
I don't think so. I think you start with no right turns out of Hollis, I mean, right turns only out--
I think, I think probably 80 percent of the problem turning motions would be mitigated by a right turn only signs out of the gas station--
Right.
--and right turn only signs into the gas station, and some type of signage at that entrance that discourages left turns in there.
What are the words on that sign?
Well, I don't, I don't know that there are words on the sign. What people are going to do are, are going to make, they're going to make their judgments based on the traffic that's coming down. We know we're going to be adding additional traffic to Hollis, southbound, with, with the Waram development and other, just other development further up on Hollis. So as that becomes more difficult to make it, that left turn in, it, it doesn't happen. And that's what, what we see on Frontage Road. You don't see people turning left on, into the gas station at Powell and Frontage. You may see it when traffic is light or at odd hours of the, the day or night when it doesn't really present a problem.
But Chris is right, you see it a lot at Christie, and it's a very serious problem while they sit there blocking that left lane on northbound Christie, waiting to try and get through, and then the sweep, the load of left turners coming up onto Christie, come to a screeching halt, and it's, can be ugly.
Yeah, and particularly, two, two other items was, you know, that area where the Shell Station on, on Frontage and Powell is, is more of a destination. I mean, people are going to the Peninsula or they're going to San Francisco, and they're, that's, that's the way they're, they're going to deal with things. And on Hollis and Powell where we're at, it, people are going all over. It's a, really a, one of the major crossroads in the, in the city, so I think that's, that makes it a little bit different. The other thing is brand loyalty for Chevron station. People, like I, I certainly have a brand loyalty to my, to my gas stations, and I will, I have been in that very situation that Andy was pointing out where I want to make the U-turn, I'm coming out from the Peninsula, I want to make the U-turn in there. So I think there's probably a little bit more than just a little bit of people who will be wanting to go into Chevron because it's a Chevron, so, you know, just some, some other thoughts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanted to add, we would support the addition of right turn only signs at the station. You know, when you're coming out of that entrance, I think that's an excellent idea. As an aside, you might put a little sign below it that says, "You're being filmed and we know where you live." But, yes, right, I think right turn only signs are excellent, and they do work, and you can put little arrows pointing in that direction to kind of give even a bigger clue, you know? But we would also just hate to see Hall Street entrance goes, because I think the station's really going to depend on it. And in truth, it is a lot easier for the tanker, which has sometimes got a tractor and a trailer, to pull in, if he's going to go down and around the block, pull in on Hollis and make less of a hard turn to have to navigate through that station to get clear over to the gas dump on the other end. So we're--
I think you'll find that the plans to widen 59th Street will make it a grand left turn for a tandem. That won't be a problem at all. I would like, since we don't have a resolution--
Thank you.
--we can't take a vote tonight anyway, I would like, if it's possible for you to work with staff, to try and figure out some way to solve the two, the twin problems of that Hollis driveway, one which is the left turn out and one which is the left turn in. And I don't know what those are, but if, if there's some way that you guys could try and work on, something to try and help us out here-- and work on, something to try and help us out here between now and the time it comes up for a vote, it would sure make me happy. I don't know about the rest of the commission. I just realized when Hank mentioned it, that the U-turn is not such a good idea because of the free right turn from the southbound Hollis. I'd forgotten that, that that really is a conflict with the U-turn motion. But it's really a bad problem, that driveway.
And I might point out that, given that free right turn, U-turn conflict, that makes for us the idea of keeping the Hall Street entrance even more important because if they can't make that turn, then, right, they may get frustrated and go elsewhere even though you say, okay, there's, this is the brand loyalty place where they're going to go.
You're the only Chevron station in a large neighborhood there.
And they, they want that.
We will, we will all make an effort to come in there through Paladoe in the back or however, trust me.
That's how I do it. I'll tell Chevron that you're, you've got their cards already. But yes, indeed, we'd be happy to work with staff and reach a proper conclusion on this. Thank you.
Hank, can you think of a protected movement exclusivity?
Before we go on with that, Hank, we're still on the, we're still in the public hearing. Does anybody else want to speak on this matter? Okay, Hank, you're, you're up.
Sorry. Sorry. I was kind of thinking this, and I didn't know whether I wanted to say it or not. But if there, if there is room, you could, you could double stripe a, an island and not put any, in any curves and just see what kind of impact that would have. The only concern I have, you need, you need a three-foot width in order to make it a legal barrier. And I'm not, we didn't, I'm not sure, we haven't designed the improvements yet, so I'm not sure how that fits in. But you could, it could be a test case and if it, if there were problems associated with that, if there were too many people just violating it anyway, or if there was an impact on the business, you could just come by and, and, and do away with it.
And overnight.
Anybody else want to speak on this? Being none, the hearing is closed.
No, 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 no. Continue. You continue this.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
No move.
Okay, so we need a motion and, and on that to continue this?
Yes.
Yes, please. You have a motion, second it. Commissioner Koo?
Aye.
Commissioner Owens?
Aye.
Commissioner Germaine?
Aye.
Commissioner Getz?
Aye.
Commissioner Mooney?
O'Shaughnessy.
And Chair Lutz?
Aye. Okay. Go on to the next item. 1372 Ocean.
I'd like to recuse myself.
Okay.
We'll set something up.
Barry is, yes, cheers.
Yes. This is a request for a conditional use permit in order to, and it's also a design review in order to convert an existing warehouse to six live-work units. Those units are now located at 1372 Ocean Avenue and the commission has seen several of these types of projects. This particular project has six units which are ranging from about 1,575 square feet to 1,668. So they're in the 1,500 to 1,600 square foot range. All of the units have second floor lofts and there are 10 off-street parking spaces. I'd like to go over and I'll speak up. All of the units have second story lofts and they're situated in a north-south direction. There are approximately 10 off-street parking spaces. Six are oriented on the western side of the lot and there are four spaces enclosed in two, two sets of garages actually on the Ocean Avenue. So we've got four enclosed spaces, six for a total of 10 parking spaces. This is fairly common in terms of a layout for live-work units. And let me just go over a few other items. The required open space for our live-work is 36 square feet per unit and that approximates to about 216 square feet that's required minimum. This project, one of the things that we liked about as we did the analysis is well above that. There's approximately 800 square feet total of landscaping. Actually, most of it's in this northern garden area and another 50 to 60 square feet here. So they're approximately 500 square feet over in terms of the open space, which we think provides a nice humidity. The orientation of the driveway is moving through here. The compact handicap space that's required is located to the northern site, which makes sense because it's close to the designated open space. So as far as meeting the requirements which have been itemized in our report, we find the project complies with regard to the unit size. It meets the minimum loading, open space that exceeds ventilation is done via double doors, which is shown here, and also window above an upper bowl. The one area that has come up through our discussions with the commission has to do with parking. And I'd like to take a moment, I won't touch on it a lot, but I do want to mention that as we evaluated this, we found that 1.5 spaces, 36, excuse me, for the six unit totals, about 10 to 11 spaces, skip actually 10 spaces, 10 spaces have been provided. But there is a provision in the zoning ordinance which can require up to 1.5 spaces per each thousand square feet of live-work units. This exceeds that. And so by the count of some people, 14 spaces could be required. We have not actually required that and I like that. Maybe touch on briefly why we don't think that the 14 spaces would be necessary. Practically speaking, the live-work units, as we've been seeing, we have required 1.5 spaces. When we have live-work units that exceed grossly the thousand square foot that we've been looking at, or that trigger the parking requirements, 2,000 or more, we are normally requiring much more parking. Frankly, these units that are between 1,500 and 1,600 square feet are right there in the middle, in the bubble between the 1,000 and 2,000. So practically speaking, we feel that the 1.5 spaces per unit would actually be viable and would work. We have no way of anticipating how intensely these units will be marketed and whether they will be for strictly work or they will be commercial. So that's something that we don't know. But in the event that the planning commission feels that additional parking is required, we've evaluated the plan and we find out that the additional parking can't be placed on-site, that it would require the elimination of most, if not all, of the garden area and you could continue these parking 90-degree stalls all the way to the end. And that would add at least two spaces here. There's a possibility that you could also put perpendicular spaces in each one of your location and you could go the 14 square feet. So in terms of our analysis, the trade-off is actually providing the highest possible parking, the 14 spaces versus providing what is considered to be practically adequate parking and a nice landscape humidity for the live-work component. We prefer the balance, but if the commission finds merit, we can actually eliminate the open spaces shown here. If we do that, we could try to come up with a scheme that would show maybe grass feed or something, just try to bring back some landscaping through the hard landscape. But we would prefer that that not be done. We think that this plan is practical and works very well. With that being said, I'd like to close the, my comments is simply say that if you think it's a well-designed project, that the parking that's been presented would be more than adequate and that we feel that the open space, because the applicant has worked and actually exceeded that by quite a bit, provides a nice humidity that we typically don't see in live-work projects and it really provides a nice feature for the people that are going to be the tenants there. So we're recommending approval.
Questions of staff?
Yeah, I don't understand if, if they don't meet the parking requirements of the zoning ordinance, why a waiver wasn't requested.
Well, the staff has interpreted this to, when you looked at the live-work, that the one space, excuse me, the 1.5 spaces per each live-work unit is sufficient. There's a provision that says that you can go as high as, or require more spaces, in other words, 1.5 per 1,000. But practically speaking, in the past, in the projects that you've looked at, this is the requirement that we used. We found it to be sufficient. We have not received complaints, to my knowledge, with regard that those projects are underparked or there's congestion or problems as a result of using the 1.5 spaces per unit.
Well, it's pretty, it's pretty clear in the, in the zoning ordinance, it says parking a total of one and one-half off-street parking spaces for each live-work unit or 1.5 spaces per thousand net square feet.
So I think that what Planner Cromarty has indicated previously though, is that there is an opportunity to provide the required number of off-street parking spaces on the site.
But as the project is presented, it should be requesting a parking waiver, should it not?
At this point, what we are suggesting, given the recalculation in the ordinance, is that there be a condition required or added so that the final site plan would meet the parking requirements of the ordinance based on the final unit sizes, the net square footage of the final unit sizes. Is that correct, Barry, right?
Yes.
And there's, there's physical room to do that. If you want to, you have the also option of asking for the final site plan back for your review.
I guess, I guess now I'm confused about, is there an ambiguity in the zoning law about this?
No.
No. So what actually is required?
It's 1.5 spaces per thousand net square feet. That's pretty clear to me.
So, and, and that would end up resulting in how many requested spaces? I'm sorry.
I believe based on a quick calculation I did prior to the meeting, 14 spaces.
Okay. All right, so I, I mean, that's what, that's what we, you know, that's what we're presented with. So I think that's what Paul is, is making his comments on.
The applicant also would be given the latitude of knocking out some of the lofts from the space, which would also reduce the net square footage. So there's some room to work here. There's physical space on the site to accommodate more parking. There's also the ability of the applicant to reduce the net square footage of each unit in order to accommodate the, the parking requirements.
Or there's also the ability, well, like you said, of putting some parking on, on site and replacing some of the open space or having some, well-
Having parking space available in order to meet the parking requirement.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Okay, we're going to open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody want to talk on this subject, please come forward.
Hello. My name is David Holsher. I'm the architect of the project. I guess we were a little bit confused concerning the parking issue. I guess there's a give and take in this. Can we ask for a waiver now? Because what's going to happen is going to be all parking and three trees. And the question I think a town has to ask itself is, all parking and three trees better than one parking space less and green space?
You could ask, but it has not been noticed. So we would have to continue the public hearing pending notification of that request.
Wouldn't it be a, in Luffy?
I would like to just reiterate what the director has said, that there is a possibility that the commission finds merit, that there's plenty of ways for staff to work with this applicant on this particular project through conditions to bring down the square footage, to eliminate part of the open space or combination thereof, to bring this into compliance with the strictest interpretation of the zoning ordinance. So therefore, a waiver would not be required. With that understanding, we can continue to discuss and take action on this item tonight. And the applicant has indicated earlier to me before the meeting that they're willing to explore those options. So it provides the proper opportunity for us to hear this item and make a decision and still comply with the zoning ordinance. Okay. Okay, and, and the way that that can be done was by the wording of the conditions of approval in terms of meeting the proper- That's correct. That's correct. We, we work with the applicant, the condition, and that the final plan comply with all provisions of the zoning orders with regard to parking. And then what it's not saying is that we would work, as I said, to work with a combination of reducing unit size, eliminating open space, so that it does meet that requirement. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant?
Questions.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on this? There being none, public hearing is closed.
The applicant? Sir, have you seen the conditions of approval and you have any problems with them?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner comments? Questions? Commissioner Germaine, does the, does the wording of the, the parking condition of approvals meet, meet your okay?
I'm sorry, could you state the wording again, something like-
I don't have the wording worked out, but it, basically the final site plan submitted for the building permit would be amended or modified to incorporate the required parking for the, or the parking required, the off-street parking required for the project based on the net final square footage of each unit.
That would do it to me.
Yep.
Actually, could I ask the applicant to come back? I'd like to know what kind of demographics you think would be utilizing this space? Would it be 50% live and 50% work? Or would you say the majority of it would be work or majority of it would be lives?
My name's Russell Vincent. I'm the applicant.
Hi.
I can speak to that. I did a project similar to this in Berkeley, which admittedly is not Emoryville, but-
Thank you.
21 units. Their, Berkeley's requirement is one and a half parking places per unit. And there's nothing, there's nothing said about square footage. I, I submitted this project this way because I actually think this is best. And I think that the ordinance might be amended, I mean, the parking requirements should be possibly amended to read one and a half spaces per unit or one space per thousand. If you're, if you're concerned about, you have live-work units that are 2,000 square feet needing more parking, which I grant you is a legitimate concern, two parking spaces for a unit of that size, two, one, one space per thousand would seem to me to be adequate. So anyway, in the building in Berkeley that we finished a year ago, it's, you know, there are people working there, but they're, they're working on computers and so on and so forth. We had, everybody got one parking space allocated to their unit and the others, the remaining spaces were available to be leased at an additional $50 or whatever it was. I can't remember what the number was. And so far, they're all, we have one that we leased to a neighbor and nobody wanted another space. One was considered enough for everybody. And one of the big concerns of the neighborhood, I must say, was, was parking and traffic impact of, you know, before we started. And everybody's pretty happy. It's right across the street from Margaret Elliott's house and even, even she's happy, I think. So does that, does that answer your question?
That's because it's in Berkeley.
How many of those were retail or any kind of uses that had visitors?
Well, about half the spaces have doors onto this, fronting onto the street, so they could have, you know, some, some foot traffic.
What about, what about parking for-
No parking was required for any visitors. In fact, because the, the parking is entirely private, it's inside the building. It's a garage inside the building.
The reason I asked is my, my concern was that if the majority of these spaces go to a commercial use or a, more emphasis on the work side, then you have two or three people say it's an architect's office. You have two or three people working there and then you have visitors as well. 1.5 spaces gets used up pretty quickly, just with the initial tenant.
Right. I can't, you know, of course I can't predict the future, but I can say that of the 21 spaces in the building in Berkeley, every, every one of them is being lived in. You know, I think that while there's a certain pressure for, to find spaces for small businesses, I think the pressure to find, you know, a place where you can both live and work is greater. And I think that's, that's who this appeals to. I thought that the, the garden space was a plus that negated, you know, not strictly meeting the parking requirements. But we are willing to, you know, redesign if necessary. Thank you. I thought that the garden space was a plus that negated, you know, not strictly meeting the parking requirements. But we are willing to, you know, redesign if necessary. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did we close some public hearings?
I think we did.
Commissioner Mooney, did you have anything you wanted to share with us?
I'm going to abstain from further discussion because I may have a potential conflict of interest.
Oh, okay. Now, we still have a quorum here? Okay. What's the pleasure of the commission? Should we go forward and get a motion? Do we want more discussion? Okay.
Architects.
I thought you drew.
I did. Left him at home.
Isn't it? We already made the parking requirement. And I don't know why we had such a discussion this evening. The total square footage is 9,829 for all six units, which is 100 and, it's 170 feet less than the 10 required. So this discussion, I don't know how the 14 came up, but it's wrong.
That's one.
So 10 would be 15.
15.
15. Hello? Oops. My mistake. I was hoping.
Good try.
I move approval with the provision-
Yeah, I have, I have some draft language that might make it simpler. Would you like to hear that?
Aye.
For that condition, "The final site plan shall be modified to comply with the parking requirements outlined in the Live-Work Regulation, Live-Work Standards, C. Parking. The final site plan shall be reviewed and approved by the Planning Department."
I, I move approval subject to-
Do we have a second?
I'm-
No second?
Second.
No second? Call a roll, please.
Okay. Commissioner Koo?
No.
Commissioner Owens?
Aye.
Commissioner Jermaine?
No.
Commissioner, Chair Lutz?
Aye.
Okay. That means the motion fails, right? This needs to be, I would recommend that you put forth another motion to continue this because the action taken was no action because it's tied to two. So it would behoove you to continue this application until Commissioner Ballingerow is present. I believe that's the best way to go.
Can I get a-
So could I have a motion to con-